Okay, we're back at seven forty-one, only one minute off. Keep this moving along here. So we are up to number five, action and discussion items. We have some annual reappointments.
Number five?
Number five. Yeah, you may not have it on the, you don't have it on the agreement yet, you have it in your piece. You only have it on the big thing because it's the...
Good, she's in applause.
So, we're going to have some annual reappointments. We have Christine Canton to the Board of Registars, Robin Richard to the Board of Registars, Joyce Dietrich to the Board of Registars, Brittany to the Board of Registars, and Nancy Dumont, missing correction, from the past reappointment. Her, she's approaching the end of the term that she considers. She has one year left on the cultural council. Go to second.
Question, these people want to do this, they told us that...
I think that Heather had sent out a letter to anybody that was...
We send them out the appointment now, and if they object, or they don't get sworn in, then Heather notifies me.
So we don't know if they want these reappointments yet?
We presume they do. Most people want to be reappointed. I believe all the Board of Registars have been checked in with, but unfortunately it'd be extremely costly for us to get ahold of one hundred and fifty people to confirm that they want to be reappointed. It's less expensive to reappoint, send them a sheet of paper, and if they object, then they notify us.
So we don't have an email list or we can just...
Not one hundred and fifty people.
Something that we can discuss and move forward with.
We're doing it backwards, that's all.
Well, it's easy.
At the moment, perhaps we will get to that point.
You can work on that, sir.
Well, easier isn't always the best, but go ahead. I hear what you're saying.
So we have a motion, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any favor? Oh, you have a statement, Chris. Do you get it out?
Mm-hmm.
Next, we have weights and measures. So after, over the past several years, we've utilized the weights and measures department from Northampton to assist us in doing all of our inspections related to weights and measures. And we're at a junction now where Northampton would like the town of Southampton to formalize a contract for a year. Whatever costs we incur are passed on to the businesses for the best interest of the town. Heather has looked into three different options for us to... The first is that we would have other towns or individuals actually perform the work of, perform weights and measures for us. However, with an individual that's certified maintaining certain credits annually and having the equipment, that's option one. Option two is to contract with Northampton, who we've worked with in the past, and that would allow them to hire one employee for numerous towns. However, this is something that we have to pay for upfront, and at the moment, they're not willing to renegotiate the terms of the contract. So if our situation changes at all, and a large business leaves, there's no cause for us to remedy any overpayment. Court costs are high and it'd be more costly for us to have the contract being enforced. So their contract amount would be three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars per year. That's three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. That's with Northampton. Option three is to contract with the state. And the state also offers the same services as Northampton. We would be billed in December or January after the services were completed, and then we would build businesses for the services. We would be allowed by law to increase our fees above what we need to pay the state to produce revenue within reason, and the current fee charge is currently before the state review and make recommendations. The contract amount we do contract with the state is twenty-five hundred dollars, which is thirteen hundred dollars less than the Northampton contract. Not twenty-five hundred dollars, thirteen hundred dollars less.
Thirteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Make a motion on the state. Second.
Any further discussion?
It allows us to get billing and arrears, which is also...
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next issue we have is the one-day liquor license designee. And we had talked about this at the last meeting, asked to have it put on. So currently, if someone decides they want to have a party or needs a liquor license on Friday, and we've already met, they can't really have a party because, or liquor at their party. So we were talking about having a designated the Board of Selectmen able to sign those licenses in short notice.
Make a motion that the chairperson be the designated...
Do you want me to ignore, or are you just going to make that motion?
Make that motion, exactly. Sorry.
That's fine. So Heather spoke with the ABCC, and they said that someone from the Board of Selectmen could be the local licensing authority, town council, although they didn't encourage it, they thought that it was possible to do so. I don't see any problem with it, as long as the, all of the paperwork is in order and you're not missing anything, then...
How about this? How about when we're here, we sign as a group? When we're not available, we sign it individually, give one person?
That's what I mean, the chairperson would be the one. With between meetings or something like that.
Well, I mean, there must be concern from legal saying that if you do it all the time, there might be a problem.
Right, well, I don't want to get into the habit of saying, you know, the board of selectmen meets on Tuesday, let's hand it in on Wednesday and ask for it. That's what I don't want to say.
That's my concern, because people can start getting around, because it may be harder to pick one if we all have to vote on it.
By the way, it doesn't, but I think the problem is going to be part of it. They form the persons appropriate, so there's two people. I don't think they understood how to get, we just go get to the Board of Selectmen, and they weren't informed how the process was. So we have to go back to the part of it.
The other question I have is if we do this, and we find it's not working, can we change it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I guess we should act.
Make a motion to appoint the chairperson as the appointing body for our kind of regular license. If I'm able to meet in a timely fashion for general board and selectmen.
Is there a second? Any further comments on this?
Well, with your motion, you're saying that she can deem any one of us a signee? Excuse me, the chair. Just the chair.
Just the chair.
Also, what, what, what does she know about that question?
That would be the vice chair. That's not the motion, right?
No.
And that would be the board.
I would say the exception to the rule is going to be very few times, because for most part, it's done in a timely manner. We can sign it as a group. When we're not, and if it was a two-week, and we don't have a quorum of people to do our business, then the chair can sign that, keep that from, you know, giving these people onto our chair.
I think that in those... Only the chair, not any other members.
I think that in the course of the year I've been on the board, one time it's come to us that there's been a short notice.
It was actually twice. Someone else called me, that's...
Right.
So it was actually two times, and he was not informed that he needed to be certified and to do that.
So...
If our legal has a little bit of concern...
And you signed one, and there are some issues there, or blah, blah, blah. Just kind of put us in more risk. There's a whole problem to this.
Yeah, because I know that.
It means it can't be sued.
This is done in other towns, my friend.
I don't know if it's done in other towns. I just know that when I spoke with Ralph Sacramone, who's the executive director at ADCC, he had no objections to it, and suggested that that might be an idea to go with. He always suggests checking with town council first, because, you know, you can't advise legally, but he had no objections from the liquor authorities' point of view.
But the council, the council knows if this was an emergency basis for a temporary one-day liquor license, it's not actually...
Yes, based on the idea that there's an inability for the group to meet as a whole, he had no objections to authorizing it. His only concern was, not so much concern, but it's always possible that someone can always challenge something.
That's what I was saying. We all got something, that's what I was going to do, if they challenge it. And if they challenge it, it's not valid, and there was an accident, or somebody got hurt, it just tumbles downhill. I mean, I personally, if somebody can't plan it enough, the legal, I'm sorry.
Right. What do, do we get that they meet every week? I mean, every other week?
If somebody, you know, but they, you don't...
You need to plan that.
You don't need alcohol at that party. And if it's going to bring liability to the town, then that, we have to go with the town, you know, what's good for the town.
So we've been out and doing this for many years.
Well, Heather, is there a, you've noticed how far in advance we're supposed to get those into us? Is there a month, two weeks?
There is not. I think what ends up happening is as soon as it gets to the park commission, I've had a conversation with the park commission. So they understand that we need things that at least usually a week or so in advance in order to process them. About two weeks is a better time. But the problem happens, is if you go to apply for your, if you say, okay, next week, and all of a sudden I want to have a party at Conan Park, you apply today, you get the paper, you know, tomorrow, and all of a sudden, it's Friday, and now you don't have enough time to get it in for next week's agenda.
You probably should be, there should be a two-week notice on that application.
That's, that's part of the communication, but in all the years of doing this, there's never been a problem. And we always, you know, chief superintendent will know about it, but there has not been a problem that I'm aware of at Conan Park because of the liquor license. Not that I'm aware of.
I haven't heard of it, and I ran there for a long time.
Well, my question is, say you're on vacation, and, you know, we don't have a quorum, or it's too fast. If I texted your email, or got contact with you, and you said, I just want to give this over, well, Dave can sign them, you know, the license. Like, you could, you could deem another select person...
I don't know. I don't know if I, you're going to tell me that I can sign them, and I'm going to go away, and then...
No, but I'm just saying, case of emergency, if somebody...
Vice chair would be in there instead, if you run down. But taking this, Jeffy.
This seems like a lot of work for an alcohol term. It just seems like, perhaps people, I, you know, it would be nice, but at the same time, if you have to have this big conversation around a party with a couple beers, maybe you should plan ahead.
Well, absolutely, they should, but I'm just saying, just in case, you know.
What emergency do you have to have that, that you need alcohol?
Who knows?
Well, most, I mean, I'm not saying them all, but my experience with this, when people come in, they usually do it very early. They're the same ones that do it repetitively. And I know Lenny Seres used to do it for years, would write out the permit, they would come in with money, and she'd tell them that, hey, we're going to permit this to be alcohol. There's no alcohol, there's no permit. And that was usually, I think what we had this last time was the exception to the rule. But if there, we've run into this problem again, I think we should have the chairman be able to sign for it.
I agree with you.
Case closed.
I think the proxy can say the same, but there's no emergency party that we can have.
Well, my whole stance is, yeah, in the, in the event, or, first of all, I, we send that prior order. So the motion I would now put forth is that in the event that we are, because of scheduling conflict, we do not meet in a timely fashion, to present a liquor license for one day at Conan Park behind the, so that the board and the chairperson...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Could you get the cover sheet for that one?
At this point, I would call for open time for the public. Are we returning to open session after the question?
No.
Open, Mr. Gwinnett.
Oh, there.
How are you?
We still have, sorry, we still have a liquor license.
Where is that?
Oh, you did.
There, you look on for quite a while.
Well, the meeting started, it started.
Six.
Thank you.
You're retired now? Pretty much, except for a while here. Now that, pretty much retired, I spent a lot of time meeting elderly people and some collateral men. And the big question to me is, because I've been a resident here for so long, what is the, they can't understand the way the ballot is written, it's override. It's in no way resembles what we voted on at the town meeting. And I think that's a big concern, and it's just, what you have is nothing closer to that on your ballot question. Sure, it might be an oversight, but I think, and a lot of these people are...
Well, I think what that says, because it was two budgets, it just, I think this verbiage is what's in the law.
I can, I can answer this one. So when we were looking to do Prop two and a half, we contacted the Department of Revenue directly. We talked to the legal division.
Right.
Department of Revenue, DLS division, issues a book called Prop two and a half guidelines. So Prop two and a half guidelines require you to word both the question on the town meeting article and also the ballot question precisely. You have to do it verbatim, based on the language that DOR gives you. The question on the article, the way the article is phrased, is exactly like, word for word, that we were given in the DOR book. Yes, it may be separate from this and different, but that didn't matter. We had to do it that exact same way. When you get to the ballot question, this is the exact wording that we have on our ballot, is the exact wording DOR regulates. There's no room for wiggle room. We do not have any ability whatsoever to write something that would make more sense to folks. Unfortunately, it's state governed. We have no choice, no flexibility in the matter. They say X, we have to do X, or it's completely invalid. That's it. That's the bottom line of the whole piece. I understand it may be hard to understand, however, it's one question on the ballot, there's two options. Yes, go for it, no, don't go for it. There's, there should be no confusion as far as, you know, there's no other questions on the ballot. It's not a, you know, ballot question along with, I'm voting for positions with the select board, I'm voting for this, or I have six other questions. It's one question. I know the language is confusing. Unfortunately, we have zero, zero, zero control over it. It is regulated one thousand percent by the state.
Does that help you, Jeffy?
I think a better way to, I think maybe...
I think you have, I think you have an option. There are several things that you can apply to add.
You have what?
That's how you can do your article.
But you have to find the right one. So you have to find, shall the city of blank be allowed to assess an additional blank in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of state of purpose, for which the money is from this assessment will be used for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014? That's a levy limit override, that's it. The other options are different things. So you have the levy limit underwrite. That doesn't apply to us. We're not asking to give money back. Capital expenditure exclusion, we're not asking for that. Pre-proposition, two and a half debt exclusion, we're not asking for a pre-proposition. So we, these other ones don't apply to us, unfortunately. They're not, they're not options.
Their options are for different questions.
They, they are, but they're not options for us. When we set this up, we called DOR, and said, how do I do this? They said, you have to use this book, this is the question you use, you have to go over it word for word. We ran it by town council at the town meeting. Said, hey, here's our, here's our sample ballot. Is this question correct? Do we use the DOR guidelines? Yes, it's a hundred percent. Okay, thank you.
I think what you're, I understand what you're talking about. I think maybe we have to get out there and let people know, by voting yes, you mean, this is what it means. So when they go in there, they click off yes. But you're right, looking just at this, it's like, if I vote yes, it doesn't mean this, or it doesn't mean that. So we've got to inform the people what voting yes means. So by voting yes to the question, we'll increase the amount of revenue. And in the way he has it, but we can't do that. So I think we need to let people know that out there. By voting yes on the question, people will do this. So when they go in there, they don't have to look at the question, like Heather's saying. They just go, yes, okay, boom, you know?
I think the big concern was with the people I got, it was, they see the million dollars in, in the ballot question now, but they don't see the two and a half. And that's, that's the thing. They're saying, is it a one-time deal, or is it...
Oh, so, so, but the two and a half, so, so what we can get each year is new growth, new growth of two and a half.
Right.
So that's as much as we can go up.
Right.
What this ballot does, instead of going to X amount, it's X amount, a hospital, a...
What?
So that's, that's the new step point, and that's to help catch up the arrears and take on for the past ten years.
Right. But this is, this is what I'm going to explain to them, the way the ballot is written is unclear. It's a bet.
But see, the, the word here that clues us off, and this might be frustrating for some folks, because you have to really read in between, is for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. So it doesn't say only on, or, you know, it's not other language, like when you do a debt exclusion, where it says, shall this town of such and such be allowed to exempt the total amounts required to pay for bonded indebtedness incurred prior to passing the Prop two and one-half, so-called, from the city town's limit? This one says beginning July 1st.
But I think the average person doesn't understand a lot of this. They don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis. And I deal with contracts every day, and I, I see wording that I have to say, okay, what does this mean again? So I think the average person, like you're saying, is...
I think you'd have to be sure.
Okay, but if you go down to Dunkin' Donuts, they know that, if you go down to Dunkin' Donuts nine o'clock in the morning, and you ask the guys down there, if I vote yes, what happens? Your taxes go up. If you vote no, what happens? Your taxes go down, and it's against services. So I think the basic fundamental is there. The technical may not be there, but the, but the fundamental is that if you vote yes, you're going to raise the tax on it, to pay for the services and that.
I think that's the...
That's a basic...
That's the second part of that question. Yes, your taxes will go up, but you can reserve this.
Right. Because if somebody just says, oh, yes, your taxes go up, I say, no.
Right.
But you've got to give them the other half. But the other, the negative is that if you vote no, the services will go down, and then you lay off the high school. So we've got to explain that, that's outside of the ballot box, so.
Is it inappropriate for me to just leave it to get all the, get all the...
We can't, we can't push this out.
I don't know.
There's a penalty, but there are individuals in the community that would need to provide additional information to anybody who was, was, you know, asking what this means. And there is grassroots groups doing that. I'm not sure what grassroots are opposed to proposition, but I know that there is at least one that is pro. If I knew one grassroots that was against, I would say their name. One that is for, I think is called Yes, Southampton. And I think if you Facebook or Google that, you will get somebody. I don't know if there's a grassroots that's opposed to the, if I, if there was a grassroots, let me know. And I would pronounce it as well on the select one.
Right. But see, the problem is, and you're going back to the folks, it's the nine o'clock meeting of it.
At the end of the hour.
They don't go on the internet. I don't go on the internet. You know, that's true.
That's trouble with the phone.
So we have to let these people know, I don't know what, to the newspaper or what, we have to know what they're voting.
I think everybody in a general sense understands what a Prop two and a half override is.
But the thing...
Because we're heading...
They're not getting, because the part they're not getting is what they're going to gain and what they're going to lose, and that, that, I think that's the part that they need to understand.
You know that, right? We try to, every year, to try to explain, and...
But what they wanted to hear in the ballot question was the Prop two and a half override, and it's not it.
So the only way to do that would be to contact the state and have them change their regulations. Because we just follow what we're governed to do, and what we're required to do, unfortunately. So I understand, I understand it would be much easier if we wrote the words Prop two and a half question to follow, and then wrote the question, but we're not allowed to do that.
Well, I think the last, or the only override we had in Southampton was probably nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah.
And what I would do is, you go back and get one of the old town reports, and see how that works.
Just remember one thing, though. DOR regulations very well could have changed between nineteen ninety-two and 2014. So there may have been some back in nineteen ninety-two, there may have been less, or it may have been different.
I don't know if in nineteen ninety-two, I don't know, I think it was a minimum override.
Right, right. Do you, do you get a, do you get a sense of a basic trust or distrust of the Board of Selectmen in this action?
Right, distrust.
That's what I thought.
Right.
And why is there a distrust?
Because the ballot question isn't clear.
Do you think we're up to no good in the sense of appropriating individually by doing something?
Not in the least.
Okay. How much money do I, do I get in doing this?
Zero.
How much headache do I get?
I cannot give you any.
Do you think as a whole, the Board of Selectmen tries to do what's best for the town in its future?
You're doing the best?
You and I disagree at times over different things, but in general, would you say that my decisions have always been for the best of the town?
Pretty much so.
Okay. And, and my, my support of this is based on what I have done in the past ten years for this town.
Right.
Hoping this town, you know, strives and does much better over the next ten years. And I think this, this ballot question is very important for how the town goes for the next ten years. And that's why I support it. And, and if you don't trust me, that's fine. But I, I just wanted to put that out there, and I get that there's a little mistrust. I mean, it's, it's, it's common. I mean, one day we just start McDougal, next day, you know, like, didn't, not a lying politician. So it happens.
Nobody appears to do that.
But I, I do support this, and I think it's in the best interest of the town.
Well, I, I just wanted to make the point that...
Thank you.
The only people in the town are not happy.
I know they're not, I know.
And probably all the states are, because we know the states...
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is we have a department head meeting this morning, where what we're trying to do is put together some open house informational sessions in the next couple of weeks. Well, official dates and times tomorrow, we're still working on a couple of them. And the board, most of the board as a whole hasn't heard this all from me yet. I've been corresponding mostly with our chairperson on this. But we're looking to do these over the next couple of weeks, and we'll get into it probably in a couple of minutes when she brings it up. But there'll be dates and times available, widely publicized. So if folks have information, they can go to one of these locations, they can get the information, they can ask the questions. If they're not sure what it means, they can further ask. And in the meantime, we'll try to communicate with the newspaper a little bit more and see if we can't put an article in just to explain the question.
I agree. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add there? No? Before we go into open session, we're not going back, I mean, before we go into, okay. You have a copy of the personnel completed, redrafted, completely redone personnel bylaw. I would really appreciate if you could reach out, just one through three...
Right now?
By tomorrow, and then three through six. Could you just please read this and take any notes that you have, you have on in your file. Take it home, read it, underline it, pay attention to it. It's really important, the personnel, PTP has worked really hard at bringing this up to date and, you know, trying to make it work for the town in a much better way. So, I have it, here you go. So they meet Thursday night, the regular meeting, but then on June nineteenth at six o'clock is the public meeting to talk about and discuss the new bylaw. And if you all would like to come, that would be great. If not, be prepared, because they will present it to you, and you need to have read the whole thing from front to back three times, and then take it in.
All the highlight of your, do you want to have them present to us?
Probably after the public meeting. I don't have a date to present to us, but if you read it by then, and then you read it again by the time you get to us, you'll know what we're talking about.
All right.
You all got a calendar two weeks ago that you're supposed to tell me when you weren't going to be here, so we didn't even have those dates in there. I left a little piece of calendar on your desk, I said circle the days. Does that mean you're all going to be there somewhere?
Nope. Means we forgot.
Okay. Just a gentle reminder, please let us know if we consider the meeting to some people.
Can we scan it in, just send it in?
Yes. If you could just send me the dates.
That's fine, too.
Whatever you want.
Heather? Yes. Yes. So this morning, we had a special department meeting, we had it last Thursday. It was the first Thursday in the month, but I was at a financial conference for newer employees, along with most of the finance committee and the treasury, no, the accountants. So that was up in Worcester last week, which is pretty cool. We got to meet some of the high-end folk over in Department of Revenue, DLS.
Five minutes, probably. Two or five minutes on the floor.
Oh, thank you very much. So, uh, the conversation, the conversation that I've had with Liz over the past several days, and I spoke with the department heads this morning about, and this has gone back and forth. And the deal was, right previously, I'd mentioned something about a rodeo show going around to different locations, different places with a group of people to let folks know, you know, about Prop two and a half, give them a chance to ask questions, provide information, what have you, make sure you were well represented in case folks had any questions that they needed answered. Um, so we worked very hard with a lot of the different departments to see if we could modify this a little bit. One of the, um, folks who actually works for the Yes Group had given me a call and said, you know, I've been doing some research and some of the other communities, what they've done in Prop two and a half is they, where they did a Prop two and a half, a purpose of getting a new school, is they actually did an open house at the school and did an informational session. So people would come, they could see the facilities and they could ask questions, what have you. So it's a great idea. How can we make that work for us? Well, my favorite example is the highway department because for whatever reason, I just pictured this and I think it would go over so well. So you have highway department over there with Randall. Say our open meeting would start at 10:00 AM, so at 10:00 AM in the morning on Friday, we show up at Randall's place, you know, we have this whole advertising, we put it on Facebook, we, which goes to Twitter and the website. We get it out to Gazette, the Gazette, we get out to Mass Life, see if we can't get it out to the radio stations and also to the local news stations. Maybe they'll run at the bottom of the channel somewhere. Don't worry, he's included. So at that point, Randall and myself will be in, hopefully a few board of select members as well to be supportive. And then hopefully we'll get 20 or 30 good people each time we do this because that would be great. Even if we just have a small group, because a small group is still a group. And at that point, you know, we open it up, you know, we give them a little basic information about Prop two and a half, just let them know where the election is, give them the facts, and then introduce Randall to tell him, you know, who he is, what he does there, what the, what the highway department does. And then we do a little bit of a tour and we show them, you know, this is what we have to work with. Here's an example, here's a truck, this is from 19, what have you, you know. These are the repairs we've done on it, you know, we'd like to do this on it, but unfortunately, you know, we've always been tight with the money, so this is how we've repaired it so far. We do all of our in-house maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. In the meantime, right before that, what we'd like to do, we're doing this in different days and times for some of the other departments, is actually do a video tour with Paul for ECAT. So Paul and myself and whoever the department head is, in this case Randall, would show up at the highway department and whatever time it is, we show up and start asking Randall some questions while Paul's saving. So Randall, why are you, tell us about yourself. So this is your office, okay? So it looks like you have two XP computers here. Tell me a little bit more about, you know, what you do, what have you. And then we go through kind of the same thing we just talked about, which is looking at trucks, looking at, you know, all the facilities, what have you, talking about day-to-day things. We're keeping it about 15 minutes so that we have a nice little clip to be replayed on the ECAT channel. Then what we would do is once we actually had the live session, if this doesn't happen at the same time, we can actually mesh in 15 minutes or so, or maybe five minutes of question and answer session if folks have questions. Because it'd be nice, you know, once, if you ask a question, someone else has the same question somewhere. And this information not only would be broadcast on the ECAT channel, but we always put it on Facebook, which goes to Twitter, and then the homepage, which is nice. So folks can get it many different ways. So we're looking at the highway department. We're looking at doing town hall as well. Town hall would allow us to actually have access during the late night hours. We do six to eight, the next time is the 24th, so that's when our, um, open house will be here. And we would actually start at seven, so we would do an hour with Paul doing a little bit of a tour. Plus, we can actually have the opportunity to invite all of our committees and commissions to come and be here so folks can ask more questions with them. You know, what do you do? You know, what, what is the town need for, for your committee to exist? How do you help us, you know, what, what kind of financial constraints are you under? Um, things like that. The other one is, the other one would be the school.
What about the police department and the base?
So the other would be the school.
What about the police department and the base?
So the police department, unfortunately, I don't have any definitive answers. I was unable to get ahold of the police chief in the past several days and he's on vacation this week. So, um, I will do my best to get ahold of him on Monday. He was not available when I called on Friday. So I will try on Monday to get ahold of him. Um, we talked to the fire chief and he's willing, able to do anything. His only concern about doing an open house at the fire station is folks are familiar with doing open houses at the fire station and they might think this is one of those open houses where you go, you have hot dogs and hamburgers and the kids play on fire trucks. But that's not the purpose. That's not our message we're trying to do this time around. So he thinks it might be best to skip doing the physical presence at the fire station. Instead, you know, just do the video.
Do the video.
Have them here.
Oh, we can have them here, yes.
Because the people don't want to test and work.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. I think this is a great idea. We should keep going.
Yes.
Does anyone just like?
Well, wouldn't we be liable if somebody went into the firehouse and got hurt?
All the time?
Well, we have somebody, we have general.
People in that building.
Have people going to go up under the fire from it or walking in?
I know, it's not.
I was just going to say, we have general liability insurance to cover all of our public property.
It's not healthy for.
I think the general idea of this is a good idea because the more information the public has, the better off we are. Yep. What else?
Um, that's the major thing. That is now going to consume most of the rest of my month at this point. Um, other than that, the other things we're working on is the finance committee and myself, Donna, who is the treasurer, Vicky, who's the accountant, are meeting again to talk about financial planning. We've been meeting pretty much every week. Um, we skipped last week because we were at the financial conference, but we'll be meeting again this week, tomorrow two, if anyone's interested upstairs.
I'm two.
Two. So.
I'm here at three anyway, so.
So tomorrow we'll be meeting and tomorrow we have a few, few things to review. We've looked up some fees to compare. We have a short-term, and a map, so to speak, of where we'd like to go with the financial plan and some basic things we'd like to cover. So we're, we're getting it.
Very good.
Okay. Probably not, but maybe.
Probably one minute over my five minutes. I'm so sorry. We are now going to move into the executive section pursuant to national law section. You're in, uh, thirty-eight, chapter 38, section 21, number six. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating condition of the public's body and we will not be returning to open session. Number one, call vote.
Would you like to do number one and two?
Oh, at the same time? Oh. And number one, possible, oh, executive session, national law, chapter 38, section 21, number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss discipline